That looks great. I mean, compared to the state of Georgia. So you're not taking a breath. Are you going to get a nose problem?
Uh, I was. I can breathe on this side.
Oh, really?
And I, like, I put a tape there. Too much, but you're going to tape it. Um, and it's just like that. So I hit here, and here, and here. So you set a job.
No, you're fine. Thank you.
You know. Uh. Yep. Yeah. There's some traces. I think we're just, we're just.
I have you. What is your time suit?
You sound like the guy who sits up there.
You don't look like.
I know. It's been a while. Hi.
Did you see what you know about the?
No, when you sent that, I'm sorry.
And that's, no, I'm.
I was just wondering. You would send me out with the evaluation in June.
Okay.
And I was wondering if that happened, please.
I couldn't sum it up. So let me go back upstairs and get it sent to you. I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. It's not a rush. I just.
I want to make sure.
I told my supervisor. We want to do this. I just wanted to make sure. I sent them that with. I think so.
Yeah.
What I said, you know, once we got the money used, you know, it's.
The right one to use.
It's not a rush. I just wanted to make sure.
I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm excited to.
My, Nikki.
That's terrible.
Yeah, Jane in the back. No proper, she's. Three, three laps doing. Okay, guys, ready? Ready? Okay. Morning, everyone. It's 10:00 AM. We ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and a pledge of allegiance before we convene our commissioners' public meeting. Dear gracious and loving God, we thank you for this beautiful morning that you have granted us. Father, this Sunday will celebrate Grandparents' Day. We thank you for the wisdom, love, and pass that they have shared with their children and now their children's children. Children are a treasure of life and have grandchildren as additional blessing. Provide them with good health so they can enjoy their families in their twilight years. Fathers, remember the beauty of the family on Sunday. Quickly, our focus will be on the remembrance of 9/11 on Monday. Remember the innocence and security that was ripped away from our nation that changed the landscape forever. Innocent men and women boarded flights and many went to work never to return home. First responders started their normal day only to turn into a nightmare. Lives full of beauty, sacrifice, and promise were gone in a blink of an eye. On that day, you will do not care about a person's nationality, wealth, sex, or religion. And you sent ones to help that focused on humanity, love, and helping people in need. The true soul of a nation, humanity, was revealed in our open hearts. We thank you that we stood as a nation. You originally blessed our great land for but over two and a half centuries. However, we see the same hate that was displayed on that fateful morning still evident today. We pray for your love and wisdom to flow throughout our land. Do not allow us to self-destruct with the same hate that caused such loss and heartbreak on that day. Father, we're faced with many challenges, but you know, we know you have the blueprints. As we look to our parents and grandparents for that wisdom and guidance, may we look to you first for the divine wisdom and guidance, as only you have made us and know what is best for us. So on this September Day, we humbly ask you for these things in accordance with your will. Amen.
I plead with the wings of the flag of the United States of America, a genuine republic which stands as one nation under God, God, and the principle of liberty, justice, and all for all.
Morning, everyone. At this time, we convene the commissioners' public meeting and ask for approval of amendments to the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. So carry a public comment on agenda items only at this time. Okay, hearing. Then we'll move on to bid openings.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
We have one bid due for professional construction phase engineering services resident project representative. We received four bids. Larson Design Group, $69,201. Livic Civil, $123,760. Basset Engineering, $146,880. And Greenman Peterson Incorporated, $211,834.56. What was that last one?
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to reports. Kaylin, approve the county's payable cash requirement.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Presented for your ratification are invoices due through September 13th, 2023, to be paid on September 6th, 2023, for $617,683. The breakdown is as follows, with 32.57% being funded by the general fund at $20961.78. 1.25% is being funded by ARPA grants at $7,700. 16.36% is being funded by other grants and pass-through monies at $100,945.49. 49.60% is being funded by RMS at $306,043.18. And 0.22% is being funded by escrow at $1,356.38.
Okay, any questions? I have motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Information items. We're acknowledging that the county will be requesting proposals for residential floodplain utility elevation engineering services. Moving on to personnel actions. Natalie.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning, Natalie.
Um, we only have one personnel action today. It will be the first one. For the prison, we have Bryant Wilson in a CO1 role, full-time replacement, $20 an hour, 80 hours per pay with a start date of September 10th. The second offer on the sheet has been rescinded, so we are not moving forward with that.
Okay, motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we recess commissioners' public meetings. The salary board, convene the salary board at this time.
Commissioners, their correction, salary board. Seeking your approval on the following actions as outlined in attachment fee. Like the personnel actions, we're only getting.
You can't not be the impression officer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wrong. The salary board action is to request title, retitle tug grind operator to truck driver floater.
Okay, that's attachment C.
Yeah, there's a typo on the.
Okay. I have motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye, so carry. We'll turn to salary boards this time. We convene commissioners' public meeting. Thank you, Nikki. TDA actions.
TDA actions.
Seeking approval to retitle the tug grinder operator position to truck driver floater on the TDA.
Motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this time, we recess commissioners' meeting for the committee development block rate public hearing. We'll convene the public hearing at this time. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. I'm Mitzi Gallagher Long with CEDACOG, and this is the Lycoming County 2023 CDBG final hearing, which we will call to order at 10:09 AM. The total allocation for Lycoming County for this year is $597,777. I'm going to turn over to Tanya to go over all your projects that the county has selected that we will be submitting in your application.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. I'm Tanya Collins, also with CEDACOG. For the 2023 projects for Lycoming County, we have State Route 44 water main reconstruction. This is a replacement of a water main and the meter pits along Route 44 in Limestone Township. The allocation amount is $207,862. The second project is for Life Lycoming, the exterior walls. This is new coverage on those exterior walls, and this is a fair share project. The allocation amount is $24,385. And CEDACOG administration for those projects is $46,500. Moving on to the borough of Jersey Shore, they have selected Meadow Alley Road Reconstruction. This is a full-depth reconstruction of the road following a previous stormwater improvement project. The allocation amount for this project is $79,898, with CEDACOG administration of $16,500. For the Montoursville Borough, we have curb cuts, Phase 5. This is reconstruction and making improvements to curb cuts throughout the borough. The allocation amount is $86,002, with CEDACOG administration being $16,900. And the final project in South Williamsport Borough, this is a demolition, slum blight removal, the Protasio Building located at the corner of Riverside Drive and Maynard Street in South Williamsport. The allocation amount for the demolition is $10330, with CEDACOG administration being $19,400.
Okay, thank you.
There's also three resolutions that go along with the hearing for the commissioners to discuss and approve today. The first one is the standard yearly resolution to apply. This is a DCD required resolution. It directs CEDACOG to submit the application on behalf of the county, and it also empowers the chairman to sign all applicable application pages. The second resolution is the adopting a Section 504 compliance officer and establishing a grievance procedure. Again, this is a yearly resolution that DCD requires for CDBG, and it names Mr. McDermott as your local 504 officer. 504, just to give a brief wrap-up, is part of the Civil Rights Act, and it says that the county will not discriminate to anyone in the county and will offer remediation for any facility or service that may not be accessible to anyone with any disability or language barrier. And the last one is the fair housing resolution, again, another yearly requirement by DCD, and that establishes a grievance procedure and lets the public know that the county will not discriminate in any housing, which would be rental or purchase of housing within the county. And again, Mr. McDermott is being named as your local fair housing officer, and as well, people can also voice a complaint to the PA Human Relations Commission. Do the commissioners have any questions or anyone from the public? Okay, reminder that the action for the resolutions and as well as approving everything is set for September 14th. So I apologize you're not meeting and discussing that today. That is in a separate action on September 14th. So we will call the final public hearing closed at 10:12. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this time, we reconvene the commissioners' public meeting.
All right, commissioners, 9.1 action items, seeking your approval on a professional services agreement with W2A Architects. This is a 2023 budgeted item, and this is for the design and all of the work on the coroner's facility.
Okay, very good news, and we had the coroner in the audience, dig. Chuck, does that make any comments?
Hooray. We'll echo that. Been a long time coming, but this is the first step in the process. W2A, the architects there are very familiar with designing and building. They built the Bucks County facility, they built North Hampton County's corner facility. So they, they know the operations and how things should be laid out. So, yeah, it's the first step, and hopefully moving out here on Longwood Drive in the very near future, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So, some may say, well, jeez, why wasn't this put out for a public bid? It's a services contract, so by law, we don't have to bid it. We do often bid services contracts. In this case, this company has an expertise that personally, I and I think, I don't know, we'll see how the vote goes with my colleagues, I think we all agree that this company has an expertise that's necessary to build a proper coroner's building. It isn't just a building that can be built by and designed by every architect. And at the same time, when we looked at the fee, the fee as a percent of the total project seemed very reasonable. And the third factor is that we really want to move this project because the faster we can get the project done, we can get this gentleman out of this building, his whole, his whole team, which is being sold. This building is being sold in December. And so we want to get them out, get them in there as fast as we can. We may or may not be able to do it by December, but this is a really good first step, and I think the three of us feel really good about this company. So, so that's why, just to, if there's any questions about that.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Commissioner?
Ah, okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, next up, commissioner, seeking your approval on the 2023 through 2024 juvenile probation services grant agreement in the amount of $242,417. This is a 2023 budgeted item.
Okay, motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
All right, 9.3 through 9.6, Jason.
Morning, Jason. Good morning, commissioners. Morning, Dr. Commissioners, 9.3 is approved change order number three with R&amp;L Development for our Phase 1 closure project in $68,350.80. Now, mind you, and then 9.4 is a separate project we have with R&amp;L. So this change order three with R&amp;L, this is applying to the project of the 22-acre closure piece that we're doing. We've found that some of our power supplies in the landfill field itself have been compromised, and we now have to run conduits and stuff above ground, above the waste, and above the liner system. So we've had to make a change in how we're doing things, and we're adding additional conduits, increasing the scope of work for that, so that we'll have additional capacity to run other wiring for future needs for pumps and wells and stuff. And this, this and the next one are part of the closure projects.
Jason.
Yes, sir.
Where do you typically run the conduit?
Well, typically, you're going to have above, but we thought what we had would suffice and was satisfactory, and we have found that not to be true once we opened it up.
Okay.
Jason, you want to handle 9.3 and 9.4 together?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Commissioners, again, this is change order number one, and this is for the site utility project in the amount of $157,164.27. In this project, this was where we were going to add the 3,000-foot of linear force main. We also are going to do 1,200-foot of utility communication conduits for fiber optics. And we also are going to do 740-foot of header material, what we call a gas header, where it's a main line that's collecting it from. What we found is, in the bid, we, it's an oversight on the, on the bid project, was 2,400-foot electrical conduit and the access to it, the grouting and the. Getting it put in, so. These are, it, these projects have been pretty detailed, so I guess, commissioners, from a director's standpoint, I'm very pleased with the small things and changes I've had to bring before you. So this, this is a modest fix, and we're going to correct it.
Okay, motion for actually, 9.3 and 9.4?
I'll move to approve both items.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Commissioners, 9.5, this is approved agreement of PSA with Rusty's H2O Services. We have a need for fire hydrant repairs and maintenance at the RMS facilities over in Montgomery. We currently have two fire hydrants that are out of service that have bags over them. Our fire companies know that they're not able to be used, and repairs need to be made to some valves that are under asphalt roads, so we have quite a list of things that need fixed. We actually found out from this gentleman when he toured our site that the fire hydrants that we used had recalls on the grease that we used on them. So, some of the things, this gentleman's fully, this is his bread and butter, is dealing with fire hydrants and the systems to go with it, so. We will be on an as-needed basis, but to say, safe to say, we have some work performed right out of the gate.
Okay. I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
And lastly, commissioners, 9.6 is the 2013 Mack truck transmission replacement for track 30, track 20, which is a transfer station truck. This is with Saskatchewan Motor Company, and $24,950.67, and that is for a transmission replacement. We try to keep our trucks running as well as we can, but this one broke down on us, so.
And it's 10 years old.
Yeah, and it's done a lot, so we just need to get a new transmission for it.
What do you think the value of that truck is?
Oh, sir, I wouldn't really know right now. I, I have not, I know not the exact dollar amount, but the fact of it's getting hard to get trucks delivered, purchased, produced, and delivered on time. So we are expecting the delivery of a transfer station truck very soon, within a week or two, but we also have our H fleet that we're trying to keep on the road, too, because it just takes so long to get a truck. Most fat, most facilities, they can't even give you a production slot, so.
This is the, this is the semi that hauls the large containers that picks up the transfer station. What do those go for new?
A new tractor, you're probably 170.
Okay.
Because we also put what we call wetline systems on. It's a large hydraulic system that we put in, it comes off the transmission.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I got a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All fair side.
As always, thank you, commissioner.
Thank you.
All right, 9.7, Leslie.
Morning, Leslie.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Matt. We're seeking your approval for a contract to combine our maintenance for our envelope printer, our sealer that are both in the print shop, and our voter services envelope opener. Combining these, they were able to lock us in for a three-year rate at $5,391.32, and it is budgeted for.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You might have missed Beth on calling it.
You know, just a note on that last item. That covers materials we send out for elections, right?
The.
The envelope.
The envelope opener?
Right.
Yes.
So the point is, we don't want that machine breaking down like one of the counties didn't have enough paper ballots. We don't want that.
And then the, the envelope printer actually prints all our in-house envelopes. We don't, we don't buy them, you know? So we print them in-house.
Thanks.
Thank you, Leslie.
All right, and lastly, 9.8, seeking your approval on an amendment to agreement with Pennsylvania College of Technology for dispatching of emergency routine and administrative services. This is a 2023 budgeted item, and I believe this is what Beth had mentioned yesterday during the budget hearing, that we actually increased our fee considerably, and it hasn't been increased for a long.
Long time, over a decade, and Beth was able to negotiate and go from $3,000 up to $20,000.
Yeah.
So definitely an increase in fee from, these are some of the things our department heads do to try to either decrease fees or increase fees and bring revenue to the county. So we want to thank her for, for due diligence and recognizing something that was definitely outdated and to address it and bringing additional $17,000 revenue to the county. So, thank you.
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
All right, Commissioner, comment.
So, I want to just see if we can have a little conversation here about this situation with the early learning and try to follow up from some thoughts yesterday. So we know that, and the three commissioners have talked, and we've committed about a million dollars of the ARP money to early learning. And early learning is one of the five enumerated areas that ARPA is allowed to be spent on. So the federal government, when they did that, said, look, we recognize this is a serious issue for communities, and we're making it one of the five. That's how important they saw it. And I, the three of us concurred in that. And so we have a proposal from STEP that planning is working on looking at, and also an interesting proposal from Fire Tree Place. Billy Dayton, who's the executive director over there, came up with an idea which sounds like a very, very interesting idea to pursue. So the problem we have is that we cannot get people to go into early learning because the pay, I mean, there's lots of problems. There's, there's a problem with capacity, meaning not having enough spaces, but part of that is because centers are closing. And they're closing because the centers may only be half-full due to the fact that they can't get enough staff. So imagine you have a restaurant, you have 100 tables, you only have enough staff for 50 tables, you run year after year with only 50 tables full. Eventually, you can't run that way anymore, and you close. And that's sort of what's happened with early learning. I mean, we know Penn College closed down the early learning program because they found that the kids coming out couldn't make enough money to have a living wage. And I remember being in Useville High School at their technical program that the three of us go to, and I spoke to a young lady, and she said, well, I wanted to go into early learning, but when I found out I was going to make $9 or $10 an hour coming out, I said I can't do it. So how do you tackle this problem? And here's the other part of the problem. The state requires a certain number of hours of training with a licensed, in a licensed center with people who have all their certifications. How does a center pay people to come and work alongside other people while they're still trying to pay their staff when that person is being trained? So Billy Dayton's idea was, look, take, give us, I think it was $85,000 from the ARP money. We will hire people to, you know, screen them, make sure they're committed, make sure they have all their clearances. We'll hire them to come in and work alongside the staff we have. They'll be paid during this training period from the $85,000. At the end of the training period, they go and they take their certifications, and they then can go on and work as a, as a licensed person. Now, the agencies are, are going to need to have people available who have the certifications to do that training, right? to do that training, right? So not every early learning center is going to do it, especially the small mom and pops. The small mom and pops where you have like maybe three or four, you know, sometimes five kids. I think if it's under six, you correct me if I'm wrong, you don't have to be supervised by the state. I think that's a licensure. So my point is that, and Billy's point is, look, we need to build capacity. So if we did this, now, here's the thing, and can we move out quickly? Meaning, can we, because this is a crisis for our community, the closing of this, of the WISE program. It's a crisis because all those, as the woman, as, as Mary Rhodes said to us on the way out, you know, some of those people are single parents. I dare say most of them are single parents. They're going to end up losing their jobs. Our employers are not going to have workers able to show up because they're going to get a phone call that says, hey, I have three kids, I have no one to take care of them. So, I mean, it is a, it is a crisis that I think we have the ability to respond to, both financially and intellectually with ideas that are out there. STEP, Rochelle has come to us, and, and actually, I don't think it's a very heavy lift on the commissioners' part, because I think that we are all committed to early learning. I mean, we've, we've had reports. But I think that if we could step out on this, this year with the ARP money, like ASAP, start to get this put in place, and then at the same time, and I'm hoping the future boards of commissioners, and I see two candidates here in the room, I hope that they will commit to say, look, after the ARP money runs out, we're going to commit a million dollars a year from Act thirteen money to build the capacity in our community for childcare, because it will not be a one-shot fix. The other thing is, and we've talked to the chamber about this, engaging the business community, where we say to the business community, look, you give money towards your employees to have childcare, the Act thirteen money will help supplement it and offset it. Some may say, well, jeez, Rick, how could you use public funds like that? We use public funds every day of the week to help stimulate housing starts. We're giving developers two million dollars in loyal stock to help them build houses because we want to build houses so people will come here, right? We give businesses money to put in infrastructure, right? West Pharmaceutical, all of them, and that's great, and we do it because it, it helps build the community and it helps bring people here. We have to, I think, commit this, make the same commitment in the area of childcare, early learning, because we will not get people coming here. I mean, the first thing, I like to say both parents do this, but the first thing a woman does, if she's moving to a community, is she says, who's going to take care of my children if I work? What are the schools like? I mean, and frankly, I think probably all of us who have children have probably said the same thing, right? I mean, at the end of the day, what's the most important thing in people's lives? It's their, it's their children. So I think that if, if the, if the future boards of commissioners, because Act thirteen, I believe can be used for that money, and I was joking with Commissioner Maser on the way down, I said, if we really wanted to be bold, that's not, what I just described is not the bold part. Here's the real bold move.
That's pretty bold.
That's not bold at all. Let me tell you something, communities are doing what we just described every day of the week, but what's really bold is this, and this would take a lot of guts on our part, but I think we have the capacity to think about it. There is a building in South Side, it's for sale, for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It formerly was an early learning center. We went out, when we had a golf course, we hired a company to manage that golf course, and we managed the company that managed the golf course, and that golf course is now making money. If we really, really wanted to, we could turn around, purchase that building, hire a company, and say, we are going full steam ahead, maybe with the goal of eventually selling it back to the private sector, but we're moving full steam ahead, just like we did with bridge bundling, where we took a leap of faith that we could do it, and we're going to.
[inaudible]
What's that?
[inaudible]
Well, I think that what we could do is we could begin to build the needed capacity so that people could come and have a place. So it's something for us to chew on, and I, you know, just some thoughts I had on the drive-in, but I think that we really, really need to move out, especially on the STEP and, and the pilot program with Fire Tree and other, it doesn't just have to be Fire Tree, other entities that have the ability to have staff that can train other staff. And by the way, I think the state would give us two hundred percent support on this. I know they would, because they understand. So anyway, we can, we can think about that and hopefully try to take a crisis and have something positive come out of it. I'm, I'm just thinking about those families and where they are going to go.
Commissars?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree that we, we, as a board of commissioners, believe in early learning, but we've had this discussion many, many times on, you know, the credentials and the education and just the pay, you know? Colleges cut curriculums because nobody wanted to come. And, you know, with all due respect, I mean, it, it seems like every crisis is coming down on county, county government or the community itself without the help of the federal government that knows there's a crisis. But when it comes to illegal immigrants that come into this country, and are, if every one of our major cities right now are begging the government, federal government, to give me twenty-five million dollars a week to house them, let's, let's start helping our own people first. Let's close these borders so that we have some extra revenue, because this is a major problem. I, I agree, health, childcare is a major problem, and we're giving money to Ukraine over a hundred and fifty billion dollars, a hundred and fifty billion dollars, and Russia's, Russia's budget for their military is sixty-nine billion. I mean, it's all out of whack, and we need to find solutions for our, our communities. I, I agree, but we need to, we need to have the state and the federal government help not taking all of our resources out of county government and putting them into these, these projects. It's, it's bigger than us, is all I can say. It's not going to be sustainable unless we have that federal and state help.
So here, on the positive side, the feds are giving us the help right now with ARP. We've committed a million, we could commit more, right? So you've, you've got a point there that we need a plan that has to be looking forward. That's why I'm suggesting that the Act thirteen money, and if we engage the business community. In, in other words, we can set up a program, just like we did with the housing starts, where we said, the money has to go for infrastructure, right? It can't just.
But, but the housing starts, that's, remember why we're doing it, because we're looking for return on investment. A return on investment on our children is, I get it, I understand, but if we don't have the tax base and we're losing that revenue, I mean, we see it, we see it.
No, you're right. We're, we're trying to get the return on investment by building new houses that'll bring in real estate dollars, but the reality is that if we don't have people moving here, right? We won't be able to sell the homes.
The heart of the issue has to be addressed, and those are two things. Affordable for the parent to pay childcare. What they pay out of their salary is astronomical, okay, number one. Number two is what the childcare worker gets paid, which is less than somebody who works at a fast food restaurant. You have to take care of our kids. It's the priorities. People go out and spend two hundred dollars, five hundred dollars for a sports event ticket or a concert ticket, but a childcare worker makes ten bucks an hour. Until that childcare worker gets paid more per hour, we're not going to get that increase, and to make it affordable for the parent, we can throw all kinds of money at it, but until they address those two root problems, this isn't going to get fixed.
So, no, and that's a good point, and that's where the money from Act thirteen, working with the business community, would have to go if, if a childcare agency is getting that supplement from the county and the, and the employee community. It has to go to make sure that it's affordable and that we raise the wages, and we can raise the wages through the star system in the state. The state has a system where, as you improve the quality of your early learning, you get more stars, and you're able to charge more, and you can pay more, but part of getting the increased quality is that you need resources. No, you need, and that's where if we're, if we're supplementing it with Act thirteen, I mean, look, I am not someone who throws money at anything. At the same time, I know that we commit resources, so we bundle for bridges, we can bundle for early learning. We can, we can find a way to put in a program that will drive the money to the two places you said, to affordability and to what they get paid.
We've talked to parents who want to work, but it's, it's cheaper to stay home than pay childcare.
Right.
Which is, which is wrong. If a parent chooses to work.
Or is it wrong?
If a parent chooses to work, and they want to work, they should have that option. It'd be nice for, for, for one parent to stay home with their children.
We see what's happening right now.
So, so the reality is, though, that fifty percent of our families are single parent families, right? And so we have to sort of deal with what, and by the way, they're not all single parent because of divorce or whatever. Sometimes there's death, sometimes there's children where parents choose not to perform an abortion, and they choose to have a child alone, and the man decides he's not going to be in the life of this child, right? So we need to put, I think we need to put our resources behind our philosophical beliefs, and with the same fervor that we say to people, we are pro-life, we need to say, listen, we're not only pro-life to the point of birth, but we are pro-life all the way to the point. So we, we should look at this, because that program, that proposal from Fire Tree and the proposals from STEP have really been well thought out by, by folks and, and I think that.
I'd be willing to.
I know you will.
Talk about it.
I know you will. I don't, this is not a controversial thing. This is a question of, okay, we got a problem, how do we solve it?
Major problem.
Yeah, and, and how do we do it in a way that approaches those two things you said, you know? And it may require us sometimes, you know, to take a leap of faith on something.
And if this is just a transitional until, like, you know, the YMCA, that's unfortunate, and maybe there's gap assistance that we can provide. I don't know, but it's, it is major.
Yeah. So last night, I had the opportunity to go up to Pennsylvania, Central Pennsylvania Food Bank and be a volunteer to help pack the food. It's, it's sad what's going on nationwide, especially in our own county. The sheriff with us, that one out of every eight adults in this county is food deficient, and one out of every five children in this county is food deficient. This is an alarming problem, and again, it goes back to, you know, both parents have to work to keep food on their table, because the price of food is, is astronomical, and families are struggling. So if you can help in any way, even to volunteer, we were there for two hours, and we, the team I was with was fantastic. We did a hundred and twenty boxes of, we just, we put forty on a pallet, as we did three pallets, and made some new friendships, a lot of fun talking with people, the community, knowing that you're, you're helping in some way. So if you can volunteer, if you're able to do anything financially, if you're able to help them in any way, they're looking for help all the time, and their service is so needed. And, you know, one gentleman volunteered that he would drive food to people, you know, deliver, deliver meals and stuff to people's homes, you know, some of the rural areas where people can't get, get to the food. So, again, if you can assist in any way, please do so. They're up on Wahoo Drive, have the phone numbers in the book, and they'd love to hear from you.
Speaking of rural, we, we helped fund the new Love Center, remember? That rural, they, they have a truck that they bring food to folks.
And if not, not at the, at the, at the Central Pennsylvania Food, Central Pennsylvania Food Bank, if you go to the Love Center, or you go to some of the local food pantries, you know, there's, there's different ones in the county community, and if you can help with those in any way, they'd, they'd love to hear from you. Also, I mentioned in my prayer, nine elevens on Monday, we'll have the nine eleven ride throughout the county. Please be attentive of the, of the motorcycles, and be careful. We want to have a good ride and, and remembrance of those who have perished, and it's an honor to have that in our county. We thank you for all the law enforcement that make that happen, and first responders, and the people that participate in the riots. It's, it's very moving, and we're blessed to have that in our county.
Public comment? Sheriff Lance? I'll go first.
Okay.
Morning, Tom.
Commissioners, good morning. Thomas Scheck, Three Twenty Carpenter's Lane, Pens Dale, Muncie Township. I come here reluctantly this morning, but I come here out of frustration. On or about May the twenty-fourth of this year, myself representing about seventeen registered voters in Muncie Township sent a letter to the Lycoming County Board of Elections with regard to concerns over the actions of an election judge in the Pens Dale precinct. The letter was sent certified mail, return receipt requested. It was signed for by someone in the county office building on June the ninth. I have the card. Without getting into a lot of detail, the concerns were a potential violation of Act sixty-nine of nineteen thirty-three passed by the Pennsylvania Legislature regarding the holding of multiple offices by an election judge. I've had communication with at least one member of the Board of Elections since then, promising me to get an answer. With all due respect, I understand that personnel actions are indeed confidential. However, to not receive any answer as of today, September the seventh, to the folks that I represent, is not acceptable. We believe that there are some issues that are going on down there that need to be addressed, and the mere fact that they have been investigated and addressed would be sufficient to the group of taxpayers who sent the letter, I should say voters. So with that being said, I'll leave it at that, and the only other comment I wish to make is a little bit on Commissioner Mirabeau's comments on the early learning, and I agree with him a hundred percent. But you talk about jobs, or excuse me, you talk about housing. Until you get jobs that are sustainable in this community, and I'm not pointing the finger at you, I'm making this rhetorically, you can put up all the houses you want, but if people don't have jobs to generate income, to pay for those mortgages, to pay for those rental fees, we're not going to get the people that we want to stay here or relocate here. I mean, that's, that's common sense, and I don't know, that's not an easy nut to crack. And I know that discussion, I've had one-on-one conversations with at least two or three of you on that, and I know other citizens have as well, but I think there's a much larger issue. While I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Mirabeau's comments, the larger issue, the larger issue is skillful, maintainable, good-paying jobs that will not only retain, keep the people, the young people particularly, that we have graduated from colleges in this county here, but to draw people from other areas that makes us more prosperous, that makes us a more sustainable county. Thank you.
Tom, can I just ask you real quick, on the violation of the election code, do you want to go into any more detail about?
I thought I was pretty detailed in the letter. I, I, out of respect to all parties involved, I liked it not to push that publicly.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner, Matt. Tom Adams, Williamsport. Bible tells us life and death are in the power of the tongue, and those who live by it are bound by it. And, and so that tells us that if we use our words in a way that are giving death or, you know, promoting danger, or we're not being careful with our words, we're, we're locked by its power, we're, we're going to pay the price. But if we use our words in a, in a life-giving way, in a way that are, that we try to think of the others, always try to be, think of the other person's predicaments, whether, even if we don't agree with them, we still need to have as much compassion as possible and use our words wisely, and we can, then we can live in freedom. We don't have to be worried about how we speak and. or we're not being careful with our words, we're locked by its power. We're gonna pay the price. But if we use our words in a life-giving way, in a way that we try to think of the others, always try to think of the other person's predicaments, whether, even if we don't agree with them, we still need to have as much compassion as possible and use our words wisely and then we can live in freedom. We don't have to be worried about how we speak and we don't have to worry about being attacked for what we say. And we're all gonna make mistakes, but I think it's really important in this day and age that we remember that. And this is one of the things that God wants us to remember. He talks about the power of tongue throughout the Bible a lot. And it's true, he created communication and he created languages for us to get along with each other. Of course, we had one language and then that got all messed up because man became dangerous to himself. So I was looking at one thing here with the idea of moving the primary. I just hope that doesn't happen, because it's not a good idea. I just don't see the value to it. I saw a letter in the paper about the Inflation Reduction Act. I just don't see that as anything that's been helping anyone at all. It seems like more of a scheme to get more government involved with our lives, especially with these carbon capture programs and the limits on using viable, safe fuel. And this goes back to the, what I was just talking about, the power of tongue. We have politicians that take scientific findings and they're talking about whack because they want power and to reduce the chance for people to live free. And they sold, try to sell this idea that we have wind power and, you know, any other, and renewables that just won't do it. It's costing lives already and we really have to be careful of this stuff. Even with the carbon capture, that stuff. If we find a way to use the liquid carbon dioxide, use it for fire extinguishers and things like that, but to store it underground anywhere, it's really dangerous stuff. Just needs a rupture and that'll wipe out life. There's one more comment about the immigration. We have that escaped murderer down there out of Chester County. Here's a murderer in Brazil and he's up here for murdering a girlfriend. I don't know why we just don't execute the guy. Because, you know, why is he here in the first place? And my guess is if they did want to send him back to Brazil, and if Brazil would prosecute him or they might try to kick him back, who would want him? And now he's a danger to people, innocent life here.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? Sheriff?
That would be me. No, I just think you, I'm sorry, Sheriff Mark.
Could I pull that down?
Stop. I'm Sheriff Mark Lusk. I used to work for Chuck Easely. I'm gonna miss you guys. I'm gonna come to every meeting and talk just so I can see you two.
There goes the 20 minutes.
We've been together, we've been together a long time, haven't we?
It might take too long.
My first comment, I want to just follow up quickly on what Commissioner Metzger said about department heads, elected officials, and how we do try to generate the revenue we can possibly generate. A lot of what we do, and I look at planning, I look at my partners in planning and IS, domestics, and my old boss who ushered me out of the office to be the sheriff so I wouldn't have to work for him anymore. A lot of the funding that we get is regulated as far as what we can get or how much we can get. My fees, for instance, are completely regulated, which takes me to my next mention, and that is the funding that we weren't getting from PCCD for reimbursement. One of the few, one of the few positions in county government where you can send a deputy to training for the whole 19 weeks to get completely reimbursed for all of his, all of his wages, his travel, his meals, his tuition, and his lodging. The funds weren't available at the state level to provide us with reimbursement. I started working on it when I was president of the association about 2015. We started to see the funds return about a year ago, a year and a half ago. So we're now starting to get reimbursements. I believe we're, our high amount of reimbursement that we weren't, that we didn't receive was around 175K. So we're getting some pretty, pretty important checks now from the state to reimburse deputies from probably five, six, seven years ago. It's one of those statutes where it says the state has to reimburse, but they don't put a date. You know, you've seen that with some of the, I think, some of the operation. So I just wanted to mention that all of us work really hard in a lot of ways to try to get the funding that we can get for you. But my main message is, as all of you know, I'm not a, I'm not a social media guy. Unfortunately, I have family and friends that tell me about, tell me about social media comments. It's really a great source if the information is accurate. It isn't always necessarily accurate. And I'm not gonna say, I didn't read this particular posting, but I'm just gonna clarify an approval that you all did last week, and that involved domestic relations. And our partner in domestics is here, Mrs. Turble. I'm glad to know I was gonna speak regarding this. Last week, you approved the funding to move the, we call them retrievers, the file system that Stephanie has in the basement of the courthouse, to relocate that to the back of the courthouse, to the north, to the south end of the courthouse, to help accommodate the project that you have been supporting to get my office rebuilt. We're halfway there, we have the operations half to do, which is going to be sent down to what I call Sublevel 1, the basement. And in that fund, in that allocation, that's the expense to move that equipment. Very, it's not like moving, it's not like moving a file cabinet. It's a very sophisticated move with very expensive file systems that allow storage of that, of the files that we have to, in her case, what Stephanie has to keep. So that's being moved to the back. I won't steal her thunder, because I'm gonna have her speak to the benefit that she provided, because what we've been able to do in this move and as we're coordinating this mainly with the Colonel, is give her double the space she has currently. We all know how we have to keep records now. It's, I think it's insane that we have to keep the records we have to keep and that we can't get funding to microfiche everything and microfoam everything because there's just no space to store. She's able to get double the space. I'm able to pick up her, what is her current space at our end of the building to be able to accommodate the deputy staff that I have after being in an office for 52 years that was the exact same size from the day the courthouse opened in 1970. Six staff, you know, has gone to 20, about 29 staff. So there was a comment about the sheriff being involved in that. That was my involvement, that is my involvement as we tried to figure out how much room we need to be able to accommodate the staff that we have. And we're working currently with your architect to do that. So the involvement with the sheriff's office had nothing to do with sheriff sales. Sheriff sales are completely independent of any of that discussion that I believe was made. The sheriff's sales actually generate funding for the county, because we charge poundage for sales that we have. We charge all the fees for all the advertising and all the work that has to be done. So it wasn't a sheriff's sale issue. It was a sheriff's operational move issue where we partner with our county partners, in this case domestics, and swap space. We're moving out of the south end, we're coming up to the north end. Maintenance and Director George is going to the south end from the north, or the south end from the north end. And we're able to provide space for domestics in taking less space and being able to actually give her more space with funding that I want her, if you wanna come up, Steph, be interesting, because she has been able to fund the equipment that she needs to have the additional space. Thanks for coming in. I'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. Just to piggyback off of what Sheriff Lusk was speaking about, just to make everybody aware, our file room is where we keep all the official court dockets. So all the documents that were required to maintain, we pull those files for judges for hearings and benchmark hearings and things of that nature. So that is the intent and the use of our file room. And like he was saying earlier, the big benefit to the Domestic Relations Office with this swapping of spaces is that we're gonna double the space that we have available for our file room. So this expansion is going to allow us to maintain adequate room for all these files and documents for years and years to come. So that's the biggest benefit. And we have the revenue and the funding to complete that expansion without a cost to the taxpayers. Basically, this, we receive state incentive monies that trickle down from the federal government and then the state of Pennsylvania trickles that down to each county based upon your performances in five various factors. So based upon the fact that Lycoming County's been excelling in all of those performance measures for years, we receive a benefit of a quarterly incentive payment. And of course, over the years, that adds up and we've been able to assist in funding for items for the Domestic Relations Office.
So that fund has also paid for your furniture.
Correct.
And your office, which office furniture, we know is very expensive. I believe it was close to $90,000.
Correct.
When they did the complete renovations. Also paid for a county car.
Correct.
For your investigator.
Correct.
And now it's paying for the files, the, the tree is gonna be moved, which I believe is, I don't know how many thousands of pounds that thing is. I know the DA has...
We want to accommodate it up on the fourth floor, I know that.
I know that the DA's office has had one up there for years and the weight of that thing is incredible.
Yes, yeah. So the first phase of the project is to move the existing shelving that we have into the new location, move the files over so we're able to remain operational. And then the second phase is to then put in and have the expansion shelving installed.
We appreciate you, Sean, today, both of you explaining that.
Yeah, and Stephanie, thank you for the excellent job you do, because we wouldn't get the incentive funds if the leadership in domestic relations, you and your predecessors, weren't doing the kind of work that the federal government recognized as excellent. And, you know, we often say, oh, government doesn't work. Well, this is a situation where the federal government has created a program to create incentives, and if you meet those incentives in terms of recovering funds that really belong to the children and the families of people who are supposed to be paying them so that the taxpayers aren't paying to support them, and you do it efficiently, the federal government rewards you. How much have you gotten in incentive funds?
We typically receive maybe around $40,000 quarterly.
So that's 200, $160,000 a year?
Correct.
Yeah, that's great. And as Commissioner Metzger said, it's helped offset costs that the taxpayers would have had to pay. So hats off to you. And tell your staff that the three of us appreciate very much what you do and what they do. Thank you, Mr. Sheriff, for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the audience? Shannon, good to see you again. Anything you wanna add? Okay.
You look great.
Yeah.
Shannon took a spill and we're happy that she is safe and recovering.
Yeah. Glad to hear it. Okay, any online?
Yep. All of these are from Keystone Chief. First, with all due respect to Mr. Stoffer. Good morning. Last night, Police Unit 702 arbitrarily decided he was not going to respond to a crisis referral call from 911 call center. Do not preach to our citizens to call the crisis line for help and support for mental health issues if our own cops don't take it seriously. We can do better in Lycoming County. Thank you.
Anything else online?
Same.
Okay, we completed our agenda. So our next meeting will be Thursday, September 14th, 2023, 10:00 AM. Thank you, everybody.
How are you, Miss Green?
Good, Dave?
Yeah.
Sheriff, this is our...
What's up, lady? How are you?
I'm gonna say hello to you.
Hey, how are you?
How are you?